Good evening and welcome to the Carnegie Town Hall. The regular meeting of the City Planning Commission will be called to order and we'll begin with a few introductory remarks. The City of Sioux Falls Planning Commission serves as advisory board to the city council. It is a responsibility of the Planning Commission to consider and make recommendation on land use and zoning matters. Conditional use permits and minor amendment requests will have final action here this evening unless appealed to the city council in writing within five days. Any decision made on preliminary subdivision plans or future land use amendment requests tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the third council meeting of the month. Any decision made on rezoning request, major amendments, or ordinance amendments tonight will be referred to the city council for final action at the first council meeting of the month. Council meetings are held at 7:00 PM here in the Carnegie Town Hall and are televised. Any action taken here tonight on a final development plan is final. The Planning Commission will first approve the consent agenda and then the regular agenda. In order to place certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff in the Planning Commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the City 2015 Land Use Plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the Planning Commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the Planning Commission other than staff move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on Channel 16 and will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 AM, Tuesday at 7:00 PM, and Wednesday at 1:00 AM. Thank you for your cooperation.
Good evening and welcome to Carnegie Town Hall. I will now read the consent agenda and at the conclusion of that, if there are any comments concerning any item on the consent agenda, we will be asking for input. Number one, the approval of the October 7, 2009 minutes of the regular meeting. Number two is Platts. Number three, 2009-10-01 is a rezon from the RA Residential District to the RD Residential District for allowed uses at South Klein Avenue and West 56th Street. Number four, 2009-10-07, a rezon from the C4 Planned Commercial District to the RA1 Residential District for allowed uses at Brennan Drive and Sycamore Avenue. Number five, 2009-09-21, conditional use permit in the C4 Planned Commercial District to allow for motor vehicle service at 2900 West 12th Street. Number six, 2009-10-05, a conditional use permit in the C2 General Commercial District to allow off-site parking at 4611 East Arrowhead Parkway. Number seven, 2009-10-03, a minor amendment to the final development plan in SubArea E of the Lally Estates Plan Development District to allow three-plex residential buildings, reduce front yard setback from 25 feet to 12 feet on North Eucalyptus Place, North Sowerwood Place, North Pekin Place, North Red Bud Place, and North Crepe Place, and to allow parking in the front yard setback at northwest corner of West Madison Street and North Marion Road. Number eight, 2009-10-06, a minor amendment in SubArea A of the Brady Estates East Plan Development District to reduce the rear yard setback from 25 feet to 21 feet in order to construct a deck at 4401 East Aster Circle. Number nine, 2009-10-09, a minor amendment in SubArea C of the Rolling Heights Plan Development District to allow monument-style signs within the front yard setback at West 69th Street and South Western Avenue. Number 10, 2009-10-10, a minor amendment in SubArea H of the Westwood Valley Plan Development District to allow a reduction in side yard setbacks for single-family residential uses from 7 feet to 5 feet at South Lancaster Drive and West Brock Street. Are there any comments or requests for, from the consent agenda? Sorry, I kind of lost my place there. And if there are no objections, then I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed.
Madam Chair, a move for approval of the consent agenda?
I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Consent agenda has been approved. Now we will move on to the regular agenda. Staff report.
Madam Chair, petitioner's right to follow his questions. I'm going to move first.
Temper? On the regular agenda?
On number 12.
Your mic's off.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you say it. Oh, that's what he said, okay.
You broadcast this.
Is this on? There we go, okay.
Okay, number 12 on the regular agenda has been deferred. Is there a motion to approve the items on the regular agenda? So moved with the deferral of item number 12, okay. I'll second. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Regular agenda has been approved. Number 11, staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair. My name is Dave Wobland and I'll be representing planning staff on this item tonight. The request is a future land use amendment to designate commercial, office, and residential future land uses at the, along South Minnesota Avenue just north of West 85th Street. The area in question is about 32.8 acres. The existing zoning is unzoned and ag, and the existing land use is garden center and agricultural land uses. In your staff report, you'll find a breakdown of the existing future land use designations and then the proposed portions of the site where, have not yet been designated under the future, under the comprehensive plan and future land use amendment. The only increase of real note would be that the applicant's requesting about an acre and a half additional of commercial land over what was, what's on the plan right now. The rest of the plan, or the rest of the area in question is undesignedated and it would be appropriate to designate future land uses at this time. Abutting zoning and land uses, to the north, there's Garden Village Plan Development District, which is developing office and residential uses. To the south is agricultural land. To the east is RS2, office and commercial districts, including developing residential, commercial, and office uses. And to the west is RS2 Residential and RD Residential, which is a single-family and two-family residential development. In your analysis, you'll find the comments under five specific categories which we asked an applicant to respond to. And you'll, you'll note the applicant's comments and then staff response. Under the first one, under item number one, explain the reason for future land use map amendment and how it's compatible. The applicant has indicated that existing C4 along Minnesota Avenue and using office and residential as transition. Our comment is that the applicant indicates that there are commercial uses along Minnesota Avenue which pertains largely to existing uses. The proposal is to extend that commercial and add office and multifamily as buffers. That transition of uses is supported by staff. The second item is identify what conditions have changed to warrant a change in the future land use plan. Applicant's response is traffic and improvements to Minnesota Avenue and 85th Street warrants a need for a neighborhood retail center. Staff comments include, are that South Minnesota Avenue and 85th Street will carry an increasingly heavy load. The new South Dakota Highway 100 is expected to be built just south of the 85th and Minnesota Avenue intersection. The proposed access points into the subject area will be the first full access intersection off arterial roadways moving north into Sioux Falls from the new highway. The third item is how is a requested amendment to the future land use plan consistent with objective and, objectives, objectives and policies of the City of Sioux Falls Growth Management Plan? Applicant's response is that this plan will be consistent with the orderly development of the city. Staff comment is the 2015 Growth Management Plan stresses the need to prevent leapfrog development and to ensure the compact and orderly development of the city. The proposed land use change abuts properties already undergoing development and conforms with the stated land development goals of the comprehensive plan. The fourth item is to explain why the requested land use designation is more appropriate than the existing designation. The applicant's response is that there are no existing land use designations. Staff comments say other than a small area designated as commercial and parks and open space, the subject property and land, land south of 85th Street, land uses have not yet been designated on the future land use map, and given the proximity of development in this area, it's appropriate to designate land uses at this time. And the fifth item is how will the land use change affect the utilities and street system? Applicant's response is that the utilities and street system network that presently exists decides to accommodate this land use change. Staff comments include, South Minnesota Avenue was recently reconstructed and expanded to handle anticipated growth in this area. The Public Works Office has requested a traffic impact study in order to determine appropriate access locations and types. Sanitary sewer and water services are available and cost recoveries are in place on the subject property. And this area does not currently lie within a regional BMP and site-specific BMPs are required, are likely to be required upon development. And you want to note too, that the city council acted on a request for annexation of portions of the subject property on Monday night and approved that, approved that annexation request. Because the subject application accommodates future land uses and proposed developments should be consistent with the physical characteristics, characteristics of the surrounding neighborhoods, staff is recommending approval of the future land use amendments. I can take any questions that you might have.
Any questions of Dave?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks. Is the applicant present?
Joel Engel with Selemi Companies on behalf of the property owner.
Any questions? When do you anticipate your development moving forward?
Right now, it's just planning and preparing for, you know, some of the traffic patterns improve as Minnesota Avenue becomes more busily traveled. We're looking at, you know, eventually an improvement to a full access signalized interchange at 81st Street.
81st or 85th?
81st Street.
Okay.
And, you know, the construction of South Dakota 100 corridor and then as the residential neighborhoods fill in from the west, from the north, and from the east, we anticipate the demand to still be 12, 24 months past.
Okay, any further questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? If not, I will call for a motion.
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of agenda item number 11.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number 11, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number 11 passes. Item number 12, conditional use permit in the RA1 Residential District to allow off-site parking within 300 feet of the primary use at 619 South Phillips Avenue. Oh, that's the one that's been deferred, hasn't it? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, number 13. 2009-09-04, a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District to allow congregate housing for six residents at 1810 South Duluth Avenue. Staff report.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name is Steve Randall, Planning and Building Services staff, and I'll be presenting this report and others this evening. The applicant for this petition is Vandy Wallen Associates Architects, and the owner is represented by Al Stone Lloyd Companies or As signs. Requesting a conditional use permit in the RD Residential District for a congregate care facility, which is allowed by the zoning ordinance under certain conditions. By definition, an assisted living or congregate care facility is one to provide apartment living for persons over the age of 55, or persons subject to chronic illnesses or infirmities, but who do not need a level of nursing care provided in a licensed nursing home. Assisted living centers need not be licensed by the state of South Dakota but must provide at least one common hot meal per day for residents in the facility. The conditional use standard for your review and consideration of this application tonight is defined by Section 1559, 122. Such uses shall be located in areas where their impact on adjacent properties would not be detrimental due to their large traffic flow or parking area. Such uses located in RS1, RS2, and RD Residential Districts shall have a maximum building height limit of two stories. The application you have before you is represented in a site plan indicating the size of the facility, the planned layout, and the distance from property lines as required by setbacks. The site plan does indicate that it does not conform to the setback requirement for this type of facility in this particular zoning district. The applicant did go to the Board of Adjustment last night to request a variance in that setback requirement and was denied. The Planning Commission then is really considering only the parking and traffic situation for the conditional use permit. If you were to decide to approve the project tonight, it'd be for the use, they would still have to deal with the setback requirements of the zoning ordinance. Possibly that would require a redesign of the project. Those are the options for consideration. The new congregate housing building design indicates six bedrooms with private bathrooms and a shared living, dining, and kitchen spaces. There will be 24-hour staffing for congregate care for up to six residents. The residents do not drive or have cars, and there is an attached two-car garage provided, providing parking for staff. Therefore, the proposed use is not expected to have an adverse impact on adjacent properties due to traffic. Building design indicates a one-story structure which is compatible with other residential units on the block. We did receive material in an addendum to your information packet this evening, and if you want to refer to that, there, first item is a letter from Lloyd Companies identifying the project as anticipating to provide two or three staff members during waking hours and at least one overnight staff. Staff would provide individualized assistance based on the residents' needs. Assistance could include help with bathing and dressing, food shopping and preparation, support while eating, support with using the restroom, medication administration, transportation, and support assessing or accessing the community. Assistance will be provided with the underlying goal of each individual being as independent as possible. The second letter we received is from Carrying Hearts. They are the management group that will be providing the facility and addressing the anticipated parking needs. They state that there will typically be three staff on duty between 7:00 and 8:45 AM weekday mornings and 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM weekday afternoons and evenings. Weekends and holidays, there will be three staff on duty from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM unless people are home for visits warranting less staffing. They anticipate running one or two overnight staff from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. There will be a resident manager at the house at varying times. When the resident manager is onsite, he or she would be in addition to the three staff people. If a total of four staff were present, one would use the second stall in the garage and two would use the driveway space in front of the garage. One person would have to use street parking. Additional statements address visitors and meetings of staff. They all seem to use the same parking provided. Having received this information, staff concludes that the application has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature, and extent of the work proposed, and there will be a complete plan check by zoning and building services, including meeting the required setbacks prior to obtaining a building permit. Staff recommends approval of the conditional use with the one condition, that building setbacks are to be approved by the Sioux Falls Board of Adjustment if a setback variance is required. And that concludes staff report. We have had a number of visitors at the office concerning this issue, and I believe the applicant has been in contact with those neighbors and is ready to present their findings to you this evening. That concludes staff report.
Okay, any questions of Steve?
Madam Chair, Steve, what's the existing structure currently?
There is no, there is a structure that is being removed or has been removed. It'll be a brand-new structure being used.
Any other questions of Steve? Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant present?
Chris Torkelson, 1408 West Waterstone Drive, Sioux Falls. To answer Mike's question about the site itself, there is a home on the site right now that's foreclosed, and I'm not sure if you guys have a picture of that or not, but okay. It's, it's something that we've identified through the use of NSP funds as far as utilization of these funds for, actually Southeastern Beaveral Healthcare is the provider and the caretaker. Carrying Hearts is the name of the home itself. What we've done is identified a blighted structure, and we plan on building what you saw up there previously, which is a six-person residential home. Rough cost, hard costs for that home is about $450,000, so it's a rather nice home and basically like, like it was stated, a congregate care facility in residential development. We do comply with all the, all the parking put forth or required. It was stated that we did not get approved by the Board of Adjustments last night in respect to the setback after a conversation with Sioux Ostas this morning. And clarification, I think what it was that they were looking for is, is more details in an engineered plan on how we were going to actually deal with the drainage on this site, as there are some concerns from the neighbors, which would be kind of on the southeast corner of the site, that it slopes in that direction. And so that's one of the concerns that, that we've, we think we've addressed actually even today, that I, that I've given some information to the self-adjacent neighbor. In this particular situation, the approval of the congregate care facilities, this is something that if I, as a normal person, would go to buy this property, I would be able to obviously build this exact same structure and be in compliance with the setbacks set forth. And it's also something that we've spoke to Ron Bell and Shawna Goldhammer on, and they've given their approval of what it is that we are proposing.
Do you anticipate going back for the variance again then?
Yep. Outside of that, I think, field any questions, I think.
Any questions of Chris?
Chris, can you talk about the neighborhood meeting that you had and comments?
There was not specifically a neighborhood meeting that was set up and posed. There was a number of discussions by our realtor representing us, by Al Stone, who was the applicant on this project. And there's, there's been conversations that have also been had here. And also, there's been conversations with Mark Bratt, who is the director of ENI for Southeastern Beaveral Health with, with the neighbors, so. Hopefully that answers your question.
Chris, you said that there was sufficient parking based on what you thought you had to provide. What, what is that number?
Well, currently, we have, we have a two-stall garage and we have two spots that are available in the driveway itself. At the greatest amount, there, there is that, that director that may be by every once in a while to check on things as stated, and for the most part, there'll be two to three. Right, right now, they like to have two people or two people overseeing the actual client or, excuse me, I'm sorry, one, one person overseeing two clients. So in, in a house, actually, that is just down the way that, that these adults be moving into, there's actually two staff members and four clientele, and so the idea is to go from, you know, to three staff members for six clientele. And as it's stated, it's, it's 24-hour staff, which, which they would more or less reduce, reduce down to one staff member from 11 o'clock to 7:00 AM, I believe it was stated. And you would have, the changing over of the staff at a particular time might place a situation where one comes in, there's an extra car as, as the other one leaves. So that rotation, I guess, in a, you know, call it maybe a 10-minute timeframe, could be something that, that you would have maybe four or five cars, but I mean, right now, we're, we've got four spaces on the site itself.
That's counting the two in the driveway, though?
Correct.
Okay. So how many, how many parking spaces did Sue tell you you had to have?
I might have to refer to Steve on this, but I know we're in compliance to, to what is, what is stated for the use, and, which I believe is two or three, and I know it's not over that.
Zoning has determined on the number of bedrooms in the congregate care facility and the fact that none of them require access to a vehicle, two parking spaces are what they're requiring.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, Chris, the age of the clients that will live here?
They're anywhere, they're, they're adults. They're, most of them are young adults. They're, they're 18 and up. They, they, all six of them will actually have some sort of a case of autism is really what this house will be specific to and towards and, and, you know.
And none of them would drive and have?
None of them would drive, no, no. And that's, that's specific to the use for long-term period that, that Southeastern has to comply with.
Okay, go ahead.
Chris, what about visitors? Address that fact at all?
Yeah, most of, most of the parents, when they come to these homes, it's, it's the time that they come and pick up their child and usually bring them back to their own home in the Sioux Falls area. As stated by Mark Bratt, the director, that most, most often times, and I can't say it's never happened, but they just don't feel comfortable staying there, and so they'll pick up their child and, and, you know, that's usually their time together is back in their actual home.
In this area, isn't that, aren't those streets already used by Augie students?
You know, I, I would assume there's some, some Augustana students around in the area. If you actually go to the street, maybe the neighbors can speak of that a little bit more. To me, it doesn't really look like student housing. There is a six-plex directly south where I would assume there would be some, some students that live in that building. Otherwise, it's residential neighborhood, looks like single families. You know, take for example this picture, you see one car on the street itself. I've been over there, and I said this the other night, half a dozen times, and with groups of four or five people, and we've all parked with ease. Again, that's during the daytime, so I don't want to make statements, you know, maybe there's people at work during that time, but I really don't. people at work during that time, but I really don't see a real problem or concern as far as parking in that area.
Any other questions of Chris?
Madam Chair, Chris, you said that you've solved the drainage, I'm still kind of stuck on the slide foot setback, that you've solved the drainage issue on the southeast corner. There's no alley back there, and it looks like there's a garage there as well. Maybe goes in a little deep for what we're doing here, but I'm...
I got something here, put it on there. Yeah. This is actually just developed today, and from the top picture, what it is, it's showcasing the existing drain or water, the way the water drains right now. And on the north side, you'll see that drains directly to the east there. The center kind of drains directly to the east, and then you'll see kind of on the south side, as it comes to the south property, kind of goes to that southeast corner. And that's where the owner to the south there is having issues, that all that water is going to end up in his yard itself. So, what we've done is we devised a plan, Steve, if you can slide that up a little bit. We're going to put a kind of a BMP, real similar to what is required of commercial sites over one acre. It's going to be actually about a foot and a half deep, kind of a bevel, kind of look like a little sunken yard in that back southeast corner there. With that, and below that, would be kind of the mix that is requested by city engineering, as far as peat, moss, sand, dirt mix, so that it can be kind of a filtration process. It was asked of us by the Board of Adjustments to put something of this sort, or engineer plans together to speak to that, and that's what we want to go back to them with, in hopes then we will have that approval.
So, you've not presented this yet to engineering?
You know, in truth, and I may be speaking out of, but I don't even know of engineering having to request something like this. I think this is really above and beyond what is asked of anyone to do. And I think we're just taking it upon ourselves to kind of take care of the requests of the neighbor to help out a situation that, again, if I'm a normal person coming in here and doing this, I don't have, you know, these problems or these issues to have to actually deal with to this extent, or maybe to disagree, and I hopefully...
Okay, they're all agreeing.
Okay.
Can you apply right away, next month, for a variance, or do you have to wait?
I believe we're going to be able to get into the November 17th Board of Adjustments, again, yep, so 13 days here, so...
Okay, any other questions of Chris? Looks like you've answered all our questions, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Yes, sir. Please give us your name and address.
My name is Dan Horsted, 27405 473rd Avenue, Harrisburg. I came here tonight frankly not prepared to talk about drainage, because I thought we covered all that last night. I thought tonight's meeting was going to be just on the use, but, so I guess relative to the drainage, I'd like to talk about that a little more, if that applies here.
What, can you tell us which property is yours, sir?
My family and I own the six-plex building immediately to the south of the proposed site.
Excuse me?
And first of all, I'd like to point out that it's a six-unit apartment building, it's not a single-family dwelling, as was indicated on the application. I think that's really unfair to us, because we have six families living there, and they all like to park close to their home. Mr. Torkelson mentioned that when they came over there during the day to survey the land or whatever, they could park conveniently. Well, yes, I was over there working, and they parked conveniently right in front of my building. So, you know, here we are, we've already got things starting, and the structure hasn't even been constructed. I'd like to show a photo if I may. The drainage from this lot is fully to the south and to the east, and this photo is taken along the side of our building, facing east. As you can see, if water off that massive roof area is not controlled very carefully, it's going to cascade right down our retaining wall and into our apartments. We have garden-level apartments in there. And we have had water in there before, so I just don't want to add to the problem here without giving it some serious thought. I already talked about the false information on the application. Being sensitive to the need and striving to be objective, I personally went and met at length with Southeastern Health Director Mark Bratt, and also with Al Stone of Lloyd Companies, and several legitimate concerns have come to the fore. At last night's request for variance meeting, we heard that the proposed congregate-living facility would be for adults with autism, okay? Then in another sentence, within a minute, we also, we heard the facility would be for children with autism. Not that it matters, but it would seem the prescribed use should be for one group or the other, and we're just concerned about how the deal can change once this facility is in place. Mr. Bratt indicated there would be at least three staff persons on the site during the day, and both men assured me that their plan would provide adequate parking for the proposed facility. I have learned from other workers in human services industry that ratios of caregivers to residents at times may be as high as one-on-one for autistic folks. So, knowing that needs often change, and looking to the future with real numbers, then, there could realistically be as many as six automobiles onsite for care staff, and another six arriving at change of shift. Adding the arrival of visitors, cleaning personnel, maintenance staff, we're contemplating six to 10 additional automobiles at times around the site. And incidentally, the site lies only a half-block from 26th Street and Duluth Avenue intersection. It's pretty busy around there. Appendix B in the zoning ordinance, Chapter 15, Section 63, Article 90 specifically states, "Before making any finding in a specific case, the Board must first determine that the proposed change will not increase the congestion in public streets." In further reviewing the city code, it was found also that the proposal before us may be in violation of Chapter 15, Section 59, Article 232, relative to undue concentration of group home facilities. Since a group home facility already exists approximately two doors away, it would seem that two such facilities in this proximity may be concentrated. The article also requires a neighborhood informational meeting to be conducted by the applicants four weeks prior to public hearing, and according to neighboring property owners I have contacted, no one was notified, and no such meeting has ever taken place. Having maintained property on Duluth Avenue for over 25 years, and having participated in most of the snow removal events, I have come to realize that Duluth Avenue is ticketed early by the police department, and plowed nearly last by the street department. Parking is a continual struggle for many of the folks residing on Duluth Avenue. Placement of the proposed facility would add another unfair burden to these residents. Your duty to the citizens of Sioux Falls for the responsibilities they've entrusted to you is to disallow conditional use of 1810 South Duluth. Are there any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Horsted?
Mr. Horsted, Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Horsted, couple of questions. One regarding drainage. You showed the picture of what your property looks like compared to the existing lot, and it's my understanding that before any structure could be built, it needs to maintain a similar water flow off the property as there is currently with the drawing that was shown.
Yeah, but coming off of a roof, the flow is concentrated and dispensed through a pipe typically.
Understand.
It's not just natural flow over the land. So, what we're seeing here, along the edge of that neighboring home, that's basically flat right there, and I've been back there with levels and strings and transits and everything, trying to do what I can to get water to flow out of there and to the south. And, you know, we've got probably an inch of slope between what you see on the south end of that white building, all the way out to the street, which is probably 40, 50 feet. An inch of slope over that distance is not very much to carry water. So, we need to really think this through and be careful.
The ordinance is such, though, sir, that they cannot drain any water off more than they currently do. So, regardless, the structure has got to be built to adequately filter, drain, manage the water on their existing facility, so as not to impact your...
Okay, then what if it does? What's my recourse?
Your recourse is to come back to City Hall, you can visit with them. I mean, it's not an uncommon situation that people ask your question, but it is handled within the existing ordinances that we have for the city.
It was commented about who would park where, on the rotation of staff and all that. Who's going to enforce that?
Well, they have the right, the required number of parking spots required by the city, so they fit the required parking requirements. And off-street parking is available to anybody that's in the neighborhood, so...
But that presents a hardship for me, because I'm going to have a hard time renting apartments if people can't park in front of the building.
That was going to be one of my questions. What do you have for off-street parking for your six units?
Behind that building, there's a four-stall garage. We have six apartments, but it's about a half a block trek up to the front door, which is on the northwest corner of the building. There's one entrance on the southwest corner for one apartment. All other five apartments are accessed from the northwest corner. So, they can come up that little sidewalk in the back, which in the wintertime, incidentally, usually has about three to four inches of ice on it, and when that melts, it runs through our garage. And, you know, this all dates back to when this facility was built and wasn't done right, but there's not much I can do about that at this point.
So, there's just four off-street spots for the six units?
Yes, correct.
So, some have to park on the street?
Yes.
You don't provide enough for the units?
No choice. And once snows, they have to move their car.
Okay, any other questions of Mr. Horsted?
Madam Chair? One last one, Mr. Horsted, regarding the false info on the application, I want to revisit that one.
Okay.
What did you say? Was a false info on the...
It's a multi-unit dwelling, it's not single-family residential. There are six families living in that building.
You mean in your building?
Yes, in our apartment building.
Okay, thank you.
I see in your note that you gave us that you have people typically operating between six and 10 vehicles in the winter. Does that mean you, is that counted more than...
Yes, because some apartments have two occupants and both have cars.
But is that in addition to the four that park in back, or is that counting those?
No, that's total for the building.
Total for the building.
But naturally, they like, when the weather's nice, they like to park right at the curb and run in the front door. If they've got to run halfway around the block, they're not going to want to live there anymore.
Madam Chair?
Yes. I want to specifically address what you talked about, a group home. They aren't applying for a group home. They're applying for a conditional use permit for an assisted-living and congregate-care facility, which is different than what you addressed.
Okay, can you explain the difference between a congregate and a group?
Sure, sure. An assisted-living or congregate-care facility, just as they reported in the staff report, is a facility to provide apartment living for persons over the age of 55, or persons subject to chronic illness or infirmities, but who do not need a level of nursing care provided in a licensed nursing home. Assisted living centers need not be licensed by the state of the state, but must provide at least one common hot meal per day for residents in the facility. Now, a group home is a totally different situation, so you're...
Okay, well, that's pretty handy.
Excuse me?
That's pretty handy. I mean, just changing the name, it's still a home with a group of people in it.
To, I'm telling you from a planning and zoning...
Yeah, from your perspective.
That would be apples and oranges to us.
Okay, yeah, I can go with that, but for me, congregation and group kind of mean the same thing. I'm sorry.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to address this item?
Craig Lloyd, Lloyd Companies, 4904 Westfield Avenue. I just moved, so I forgot where I lived. A couple of things that I noticed in this conversation is that, first of all, Mike, you're right about taking care of the drainage. I believe it was you that asked about that. Normally, what we do is we use oversight gutters on a building like this. We drain it into a 12-inch pipe, connect it to the storm sewer in some fashion like that, to try to take it off of the building, so we don't drain into a neighbor's area. Chris did do, take a proactive approach, went, saw our engineers to come up with some other ways to handle the gentleman's drainage problems, which I think is a pretty good solution, and we'll spend more time on that, and we'll be happy to see the city engineers. The other thing is, if I was going to go out and buy this lot, I could put a three-bed room home on that. And, you know, the people that buy the house or move in the house, as a husband and wife, got two kids or three kids, and if they're like our kids, every one of those kids had cars, and my wife had a car, and I got a car, and they have friends and everything like that, I think the impact on the neighborhood would be much, much higher than with this type of congregate care living center. It's controlled. I don't have anybody living next to me that's taking care of people 24 hours, seven days a week, and can make sure that there's no parties there, there's no unsightly things. The place will always be kept clean and neat. If you go around to any of the congregate care living centers we've built around the city, I mean, they look just like a regular house, if not better, and they got landscaping, they got sprinkler systems, they're well-maintained and taken care of. I do get amazed that he's got a six-plex, and he's got four parking stalls. If I built a six-plex, and I got to have parking, I'm going to have to have nine to 10 stalls. So, you know, he's trying to take his problems and make everybody else's problems. This is a foreclosed property. We're supposed to infill, or we've been asked to infill, different areas of town. This is a process to improve areas, make them better, and be a good neighbor in those areas. And I think that's what Southeastern has done many, many, many times, and supplied a program for fair housing. It's a fair housing issue here, and we're supplying and taking care of people that are a lot less fortunate than any one of us. And I think that I ask you to approve this, just under, that we're improving the area, and we're taking care of all the situations that we possibly can, and we're doing it in a very forthright manner. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions of Craig? Okay, thank you, Craig. Anyone else wishing to address this item?
I'm Bert Horsted, I live at 1500 Otanka Trail. I co-own this six-plex, my son Dan. I apologize if I'm going to be a little redundant with what Dan said, but I'll try to make it brief. For me, there's three major issues. The first one, of course, is parking. There's room for not more than two cars in front of this property. And if you look at that picture, you can readily see that if you park on the other side of the street, it makes Duluth a one-way street. It's very difficult for two cars to meet if there's cars parked on both sides. And with what's going on here, that's largely going to be the case. I can't believe with that many... I can't believe with that many people and that much activity that we aren't gonna have service people, we're gonna have garbage trucks, we're gonna have visitors, we're gonna have staff turning over. And I can't believe they're gonna wanna park behind other cars and act, and restrict access for getting in and out. So it's very hard to believe that we won't have, exacerbate the parking issue there. And true, we only have four off-street parking, but that was grandfathered in. That's what they allowed when this property was built. So parking for us is huge. The second one, obviously, is the water flow. If you drive by, you'll see that the lay of the land from the property across the one we're discussing here is downhill. And it's downhill from this lot. It drops down the wall that we saw earlier and right on over to our garden-level apartments. Now, if you compute out the square footage of the building that they're proposing, something like forty-four hundred square feet. Every twelve feet, every twelve square feet in a one-inch rain is a cubic foot of water. Cubic foot of water is seven-point-four gallons. You do the math, it's twenty-seven hundred gallons of water for every inch of rain. You get a three- or four-inch rain, you're in a virtual lake surrounding our property. So, so the water thing is, for us, is huge. And the third issue, now I'm totally sympathetic with what Southeastern Mental Health does, and for this cause. But the truth is, it's gonna impact our ability to rent and the value of our property. If you come in and somebody says, "There's gonna be two of us. Where will the second car park?" We may have to be in the position of saying, "Well, depending on the time of day, it may be a half a block east, half a block west, or half a block south. They're gonna drive right on and rent a different apartment." Or if a mother is bringing down her... We do have a lot of Augustana students in Southeast, and, uh, and Sioux Falls College. We got two in there right now from Sioux Falls College. If a mother coming down from Sioux Falls Town Dakota to rent an apartment, they know they gotta park a half-block away and come home late at night. Or, and this may not be proper to say, but seeing a facility next door run by, by a mental health clinic, they, they will probably drive on by. And maybe that isn't appropriate, but, but it's real life. So it will impact us financially in the ability to rent and the value of our property. So I thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Horsted? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we're going to close public testimony and, um... Oh, okay. Come forward, please, and state your name and address.
My name is Dick Cruz, and I live at six-twenty-five West Twenty-Sixth Street. Uh, it's the corner of Twenty-Sixth and Duluth. The side of our property has ninety-nine feet on Duluth. Um, first, under the conditional use, um, information, in all cases, the impact of the proposed use on adjacent, adjacent properties will be a major consideration. And I guess I would add in favor of existing conditions. Starting with twenty-seventh and Duluth and going north in the block at which I live, the six-plex has about two thousand ninety-one square foot, feet of buildings with roofs. That amounts to about twenty-four percent of the land being covered by a building. Uh, the north side of the building is about fourteen feet north, south of the north property line. The new structure would be less than twenty feet from wall to wall with the six-plex. The new structure would have four thousand four hundred and eighty square feet, um, and it covers fifty-one percent of the land. And then if it's five feet from the south property line and five feet from the north property line, it would also be the house to the north on, uh, Lot thirteen is also five feet off the property line. So those two places, uh, from wall to wall would be like ten feet apart. The, um, the roof of the new, uh, call it, um, building, compared to the roof of the six-plex plus the garage, is two-point-one-four-two-five times. So it's a lot bigger. It doesn't really fit in the neighborhood. Uh, there will be a lot of rain runoff, and there will be parking problems. And it will change the characteristics of the neighborhood. The, um, new building would be about ten feet from the south living room windows of the house to the south of us, Lot thirteen. They have three little boys who are a baby, a two-year-old, and a four-year-old. Uh, so I wondered what, you know, what are their rights? On our property, um, across the street is six-hundred West Twenty-Sixth with, which is TLC, the Transitional Living Center, which is a group home. Uh, and that is sixty-six feet north of our property line. This new project would be thirty-three feet south of our south property line. So we would have two, uh, group or congregate, uh, facilities, um, within sixty-six feet of our, of our property. Uh, we were told by a previous, um, city council that congregate living or group homes would not be concentrated in one area of town. Um, how far apart do they need to be? I guess there is no, um, regulation for that. But I maintain that, um, having or being in between these two group homes would be an undue hardship on us and that it would affect our property values. And I have no recourse to ask anyone for compensation. At a variance meeting, it was mentioned that people with problems other than autistic people may reside at the new building at eighteen-ten South Duluth. The, uh, property across the street from us at six-hundred West Twenty-Sixth, we were told, was to be a halfway house for drug and alcohol-dependent doctors and lawyers. This did not happen, although men did live there for a while. This summer, there were young ladies out in the front yard lying in bikinis, sunbathing, while cars going by were honking their horns. Now, what happened? And this is just right across the street from our house. Now, the proposed use that they have is for autistic adults, plus perhaps a couple of people who are not, um, autistic, but who would need, um, need care. They would have problems. I think this is more than what any one particular neighborhood should have to put up with.
Just a moment. Any questions?
I think, and this might be more for Chris, but I was wondering why there was no neighborhood meetings? You know, it's just, it's just come up more and more. Uh, I don't... Can I... Maybe not for...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cruz. Well...
Maybe not for you, so...
What's that?
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Thank you. There were none.
Uh, to... Chris, yeah. You stated that there were no neighborhood meetings, but people met with, from Southeast and other places, or the, uh, care group met with the neighbors at different times and discussed this with them?
You know, it was kinda stated by Dan when he came up that he had extensive conversations with, with Mark Bratt, the director of, of E&amp;I, who is the director of, um, or will be the director of this particular facility. He also stated he had, uh, extensive conversations with Al Stone. Um, and, and, you know, I think it was hour-to-two-hour meetings. There was also, uh, discussions with the realtor, um, with, with the gentleman. Uh, we did not go out and pass out flyers and solicit in actual meeting itself. However, we did field, uh, questions, calls. Uh, we tried to respond, I believe, any, anything that, that needed to be provided. I mean, we're, you know, we're not trying to hide anything here. We're trying to be as open as possible, and, and we're speaking to everything that, that is there, and we're bringing that forth because we want you guys to understand what it is that we're doing, who we're serving, um, what's actually gonna take place, uh, on this site. To answer maybe the question about the children with autism, and I think we've all seen of late that, that autism is actually increasing, um, this is specific for autism. The family that originally came to us through Southeastern, uh, has a child Mitch, where you see Mitch ink on there. Um, and, and they came to us to build a home for children with autism because there is not a need. Right now, there is not a place for their son to be. Um, and so i- in conjunction with Southeastern and, and that family, the Riley family, um, this is, is specific, uh, and set out to be, uh, specific for, for kids with autism. And I kinda got off away from the meeting, but sorry.
Okay, I was just, was curious as to why, you know, you, other than the conversations with Dan had and Mr. Horsted said, had, and the gentleman over here had, the rest of the neighbors weren't brought into this situation to get their concerns on parking and drainage and other issues from them?
We, we have not heard from anyone else. And I know Mark Bratt, uh, spent some time with the gentleman that was just up here last night and speaking to him, and I, I believe they know one another from the past. And I'm not sure if Steve's gotten, um, very many calls from other neighbors. But, uh, again, we were, we were open discussion. We, we returned calls. We sat, met with people when they had questions. Again, we wanna, we wanna have a good relationship, and it's the biggest thing that Mark, Mark spoke up today is that he, he doesn't wanna be a hindrance upon the neighbors. He wants to be, you know, welcome into the neighborhood and, and be a part of the neighborhood and, and really be a good neighbor to these people. And, and that's kinda some of the things that Craig spoke to.
Okay, any other questions of Chris?
Madam Chair.
Sure.
Chris, I, I just wanna clarify something you said. Um, this, this is a group home for, um, adults, eighteen over. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is. Um, and it, I, I do it all the time, and I apologize, and I, I think it, they cringe maybe when you say that, but it's for adults. And sometimes I say childcare, and, and it is, you know, a congregate facility. And, um, so I, I think that was my mistake if I did say that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions of Chris? Okay, that's fine. Thank you, Chris. Anyone else wishing to address this... Okay, we'll have one more. Go ahead, Mr. Horsted.
Do you need my name and address again?
Yes.
Dan Horsted, two-seven-four-oh-five, four-hundred-seventy-third Avenue, Harrisburg. I'd just like to point out that, uh, regarding the neighborhood meeting that was never conducted is clearly a violation of ordinance. And I went to Al Stone and Mr. Bratt clearly on my own because I wanted to be informed. I wanted to see what the overall plan was, and quite frankly, I enjoyed my conversations with both of those gentlemen. So I'm not here to make enemies either. I just want something that's gonna work for everyone. And I feel like the risk with condit- conditional use is, once it's in place, it's like letting a cat out of a bag. You really don't know what's gonna happen after that because no one really enforces what all the principles they say are gonna be applied in the use of the premises. Um, and other things that, that bother me is when I feel like I'm, I'm not being told the truth. For instance, one day when I was over at our property raking leaves, there was a gentleman over on the site we're talking about, so I went up and addressed him, and I asked him what he's up to, and he said, "Oh, I'm from Lloyd Companies." I said, "What, what's going on here?" And he said, "Well, we're gonna fix up this house and rent it out." And then once I let on that I knew more about the situation than what he was telling me, he backed right off and started letting me in on, on all the things I pretty much already knew from talking to Mr. Stone. So when things like this happen, it's very upsetting because you don't know who's lying to you, and, uh, none of us can control the future. All we can do is come to this meeting and, and try to look out for ourselves and hope that you will help us do that because that's why you're here. Another thing that kinda irked me was when the conditional use signs first went up. I went over and read them, and they say, "It shall be unlawful to remove this sign prior to such-and-such a date." Well, it started to rain, and, uh, these signs were pasted on a, a two-by-twelve, which is like a header for a doorway. It's very heavy lumber with a, like a one-by-two stake. The stake was driven in the ground about this far. It was like they were designed to fall over so nobody would see them, you know? It just... I've been around hammers and sticks all my life too, and I know they have, and it just, you know, it just kinda hit me, "What's going on here?" So I went and drove the stakes in further so the signs would stay up. I put duct tape around them so they would, wouldn't fall off the piece of wood. You know, it's just all these little things that add up, telling me that somehow I might be really getting, taken to the cleaners here. Okay?
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Erica.
Erica Beck, City Planning Office. I just wanna make a couple of points of clarification perhaps in regards to this item. Um, first of all, several of the comments have been in regards to, um, requirements that are usually addressed when this type of application comes forward, specific to a group home. Um, in this instance, it's a congregate care or assisted living facility, so the applicant is not required to host a neighborhood meeting. And they're not...
Excuse me just a second, Erica. Is your mic turned on?
Can you hear me now? Okay.
They can't hear you in the back.
I'll, I'll try to talk a little bit louder. How about that?
Okay, that's better.
Um, as I was saying, um, this, this specific application is for a congregate care facility or assisted living center. So they do not have to move forward, they're not required by ordinance to move forward in hosting a neighborhood meeting. They're also not required to give four weeks' notice as a group home would be. So there are different requirements for each of those types of applications. Um, second of all, uh, if the use of the property changes in the future, so it's no longer an assisted, um, care facility or a congregate care facility, they would be required to come back through this board for additional approvals, such as a conditional use permit. So for instance, if the use were to change to, um, a dormitory, for, a dormitory, for instance, for one of the surrounding college campuses, they would be required to come back and address those types of concerns, whether it be for parking or what have you. So rest assured in that end that they would be required to come back if the, if the use were to change. Um, Lloyds, um, have addressed that they would be willing to have the drainage plan that they've provided as of today go through the city engineer's office. So if that makes this body feel better, that could be added in, on as a condition, um, to this application so that that would be reviewed by the city engineer's office so that we can make sure that there won't be any negative impact on the adjacent property owner in terms of drainage. And then also, if, if you deem willing and fit, you could also add an additional condition on there that would, uh, require a review of the project in a whatever time period you feel would be most appropriate so that we can come back and take a look at the additional parking, um, uh, issues or concerns that the neighborhood has in the future. Just some suggestions for the board to consider.
Any questions of Erica?
Madam Chair, Erica, thank you for your clarification on the, on the neighborhood meeting. One more clarification. Is there anything with, with respect to the ordinance about the undue concentration of group homes or of, um, congregate care facilities?
Uh, we address that within the group home ordinance, or the, the area of the ordinance specific to group homes. We do not talk about that with congre- congregate care or assisted living facilities.
So several things have come up and, that have been the difference between the definition of a group home and a congregate care facility. And this being a congregate care facility, it, it bypasses several of those, uh, requirements.
Correct. It's not the same as a group home.
Right.
Um, the levels of care required for, um, participants within a group home is considerably different, and that's how we differentiate between the two mostly.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Erica? Thank you, Erica. Okay, at this time, I would like to call for a motion.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, uh, for a...
I'll make a motion for approval with three stipulations. The one that's in the packet and stipulation number two, that the city engineer would review the drainage plan. And number three, that this conditional use permit would be reviewed in one year.
I'll second that motion. Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Excuse me. I want to ask for a small adjustment that the, on the second condition, the city engineer doesn't review, but the city engineer approves the drainage, the drainage plan from the site.
How about if we say review and approve?
That'd work even better.
Okay. And then, on number three, this conditional use permit?
Reviewed in a year.
Reviewed in one year.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah. I just want to say I can appreciate the concerns of the neighbors who have been there a long time. And that in these well-established neighborhoods, parking can be an issue because how people live and work today is different than how people lived and worked when these neighborhoods were established. But I think you find that all over Sioux Falls. I grew up in a neighborhood like this. And you are jockeying for parking. It's just the nature of the beast. But I really think what our role is with regard to land use is this a proper land use for this parcel of land. And I wholeheartedly believe it is. I believe that the residents that are going to use this facility will not impede the parking in a negative way. There will be some temporary turnover of staff. But I also believe that there are other facilities in the neighborhood that have a greater impact on the parking than this facility will have. So, with regard to land use and an assisted living or a congregate care facility, I think it is a really good land use for this parcel of land. And I would add that given the amount that they're investing in this, that I think that will be probably an improvement to the neighborhood as well. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number 13 passes. Number 14, 2009-09-13, a final development plan in Subarea A of the 41st Street and Sartoma Avenue Plan Development District to construct a three-story apartment building at South Theodore Avenue and West 41st Street. Staff report.
The planning commission did look at a major amendment in this Plan Development District to allow the use. That request has been approved by the city council with subarea regulations as included in your staff report. The applicant is represented by Stensel Corporation, the owner Kraus Holdings Incorporated. And again, the purpose is for a 65-unit apartment residential building located in the 41st and Sartoma PD, Subarea A. To the north of the subject property, there is an existing single-family residential neighborhood, RS2. To the south of the property, we have two developments actually. If the property is plotted as shown on the plan, Walgreens and Come and Go would be located directly south of the subject property. And to the east, it's SS Institutional Roosevelt High School. And to the west, it's 41st and Street and Sartoma PD, Ace Hardware, and some vacant property behind Ace Hardware. The applicant's final development plan is presented to you, does conform to the list of requirements for submittal. The other regulations, just to review those, for this PD and approved by the planning commission and the city council include those listed, previously listed in the PD with the following additional requirements. First one being to increase the size of the berm along the north subarea boundary to approximately eight foot in height with trees to be staggered on top every 14 to 16 feet. The berm is to be built immediately to screen construction activity to the south and to be planted prior to occupancy. The second, provide speed bumps in the driveway shared with adjacent properties. The third, provide a playground for the children of residents within view of the building. Fourth, provide a site lighting plan prior to building permit issuance. The height of all outdoor lighting fixtures when located within 150 feet of residentially used or zoned property shall not exceed 20 feet above the grade immediately below the lighting fixture and conform to the city lighting ordinance. Number five, provide residential off-street parking at at least two off-street parking spaces for each dwelling unit that contains less than three bedrooms and two and a half spaces for each unit with three bedrooms or more. Number six, parking lots within sight of adjacent single-family residential zoning or use shall be screened from view. Number seven, residential buildings are limited to three stories in height and must include pitched roof design, residential-style siding, doors and windows, and a minimum of 30% brick on exterior walls. Number eight, multiple-family housing projects are to incorporate crime-free multiple housing program design standards and participate in the Sioux Falls Crime Free Multi-Housing Program. These subarea regulations are required of the project. And unless they are conformed to, they would not get a building permit. If they were to propose something other than what these regulations say, they would have to come back to you and then again to the city council for a modification. Having said that, we find their application to be complete. The design as presented does present a varied building elevation appearance in terms of trying to break up the long length of the building with gable roofs, different coloring, and different materials. Also, a horizontal band above the first level. Accent. In the site plan, it looks at the required parking. The units are located, or the building is located parallel to Theodore Avenue, which puts the end of the structure against the single-family residential neighborhood and therefore is an effort to fit the building within the context of making it compatible with that neighborhood. It is a three-story structure. The new shapes Sioux Falls would like to see more of a step-down design next to the single family, getting to two stories possibly. But what the applicant is indicating is orientation of the building that minimizes the impact of that three-story appearance. The parking is more than adequate. And the applicant has indicated to staff that they will be pursuing density bonus in order to plant the property and construct the 65 units. According to the parking provided, both in garages and on the surface parking, they would meet the requirements of density bonus calculations for those kinds of features. The playground would also add into the density bonus calculations. However, it is the planning director that has to sign off on that as it being compatible with the existing residential neighborhood. Your input this evening would be appreciated. There is the shared access situation. They've indicated the speed bumps. And otherwise, the buffer to the north along the north boundary line is complete with the grass berms and tree plantings as indicated in the subarea regulations. We've had several calls from neighbors concerned about traffic in the neighborhood that possibly could be a result of this particular project. And we've had some concerns expressed about the visual impact of a three-story structure this close to their homes. Perhaps those neighbors are here this evening. And the applicant has indicated that they have talked with the neighborhood about these issues and should be prepared to report to you. The applicant is complete for building design, landscaping, parking, and all other requirements for the final development plan. The staff is recommending approval as an allowed use and otherwise meeting the subarea regulations with three stipulations. The first being to provide site landscaping and landscaping buffer along the north property line with trees and berm as indicated on the plan and in the landscape schedule presented. Second one being to locate a new playground and equipment on the site so that it will be visible from the apartment building. Presently, it is not. And third, if the property, or the project site is not plotted to conform to density requirements in this Plan Development District, an approved density bonus application will be required prior to building permit issuance. And that concludes staff report.
Any questions of Steve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Steve, in the subarea regulations, case seven, it talks about 30% minimum percentage of brick on next year. Did the drawing submitted, did that show that? I couldn't tell from...
It appeared to have the brick around the entrances to the building. Probably what would happen, I mean, I talked to the applicant about it and they indicated that yes, it is 30%.
It would be 30%.
If not, it would be an easy fix. Usually, they put in a wainscote at the lower level and that would probably meet the requirement.
Okay. Any other questions of Steve?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Steve, the road just south of the apartment building, proposed apartment building, that has access to South Theodore, it also has access to Sartoma. Is that correct?
It is not a public road. It is actually an access easement that functions more as a driveway or a shared driveway between the commercial properties and this residential property. So, out onto Sartoma and out onto Theodore, those are actually driveway access points, not street access points.
But if I'm heading south on Sartoma, there's nothing that means I can't leave the apartment building on the south, head to the east, and get out on Sartoma either north or south?
Same way for Walgreens and for Come and Go. They have to use the same access points.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Steve. Is the applicant present?
Hello. Nathan Stensel, Stensel Corporation, 5700 Josh Wyatt Drive, Sioux Falls. Probably to address a couple of those items, Mike, that you were referring to, we do have a joint easement access agreement, obviously, for our parking lot. So, the tenants of the multi-family structure will have access to get out onto Sartoma or go over to Theodore Avenue.
Nate, no problem moving the playground so it's more visible?
No, that will not be an issue also. And then, on the 30% brick, we just didn't want to get too much money spent on this thing until we get it more to the approval. But I have had conversations with Steve Randall and we have no problems meeting or exceeding that 30% brick. That's not an issue at all.
Any other questions of Nate?
So, have you visited with neighbors at all?
Yeah. Well, I was here about a month ago for the start of this process. And then, last night was the council. So, a little over a month ago now, I did have a neighborhood meeting. The street to the north of the building is Rosemont Lane. We invited all the households on both sides of that street, as well as all the households of Rosemont Court, our circle, and had a good neighborhood meeting, addressed a lot of the concerns. And that's, we've increased our financial commitment to the project by adding probably 40, 50-plus trees, increasing the berm height. There's an existing berm of four feet. We're going to have to be ripping that down, building it back up to eight feet, and then replacing a ton of trees. And we've made a, and has specified, you guys have it on the site plan, they are trees of significant size. So, those are items that came up. Speed bumps on the joint access area, those are all items, concerns of the neighborhood that we were trying to address.
So, they do it would be three stories at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just have a question about the design of the building. Does adding decks, does that add a significant amount of money to the project?
Yes, it does. And then, some of the items that we even talked about with the neighbors, because it was also a concern of one of them, you know, they were curious if there was decks on the building, our walkouts on the main floor. And one of the reasons why we chose not to do that, and it actually ended up being a bonus to them, is we don't like having that because it seems like more than often, they become an area to collect junk for people. You know, they get the two old bikes and the grill and a few other things ended up out there, you know, more of a storage facility. Our buildings, we don't do the walkouts on the main floor due to that concern. You know, it does add significant expense, obviously, to put decks on the building.
And this building would be similar to the South Sycamore?
Yes.
Didn't you build one of those?
Well, yeah. But of course, a little different roof line, more brick added to this one.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to address this item? Okay. If not, I will call for a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move we approve the application with the three specified stipulations. I would like to add a fourth. In reading the schedule of trees, there are four ash trees. And I'd like to take that down to zero ash trees to be planted on the site. But that those four to be made up of some other variety.
Is there a second to that motion? I'll second the motion. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion about the ash trees? No, just once again, I'd like to thank Nathan for really listening to the neighbors and what could have been a very acrimonious land transition. You can see that nobody's shown up to speak in opposition to you. I think the orientation of the building away from the residential and towards the street certainly has helped that as well as all the other things you've done. So, I appreciate your attention and time. And it shows if you take the time, it doesn't have to be a bad experience for the neighbors and for yourselves. I also appreciate the extra attention you gave to raising the berm and the additional trees. That makes a huge difference. Thank you. Okay, any other discussion? If not, all in favor of item 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item 14 passes. Item number 15, an ordinance of the City of Sioux Falls amending Chapter 15 of Appendix B of the Revised Ordances of Sioux Falls by revising Final Development Plan Exceptions.
Good evening, Jeff Schmidt, representing planning staff on some items this evening. That previous item that we just had on the agenda, that was a final development plan that came through in a Plan Development District. Currently, in the existing ordinance, there are some items that are exempt from going through Planning Commission on final development plans. Those are single-family houses, two-family residential structures, and public service facilities. Planning staff has received requests recently to add recreation facilities to this list of exemptions. And we've had a real challenge trying to define what those recreation facilities are because, you'll hear once I explain them to you, they're really the clubhouses for subdivisions. Pool houses, media rooms, party anniversaries. When these subdivisions are getting built, the builder wants to build that facility also with his housing development. And should he have to come back before this body just to do a final development plan? Or can he build it like his single-family housing? So, we're calling them subdivision recreation facilities versus a public or private. And we've added that to the list of exemptions along with churches and schools. So, again, those three items would be going forward to the building services and to zoning for final plan checks. They just would not be coming to this body for a final development plan.
Okay, any questions of Jeff? Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Do you want us to take any action on this or...
I'll make a motion to approve item number fifteen.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item fifteen passes. Item number sixteen, a resolution of the City of Sioux Falls approving the Shape Sioux Falls twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. I'll be glad when this is over, won't you, Sam?
I don't know where to start.
This had to have been a tremendous amount of work.
It is, but I think it's really important and I think you all know that too and it is a lot of work to update a comprehensive plan. It is, it's very comprehensive. Sam Belcock, City of Sioux Falls Planning Office. The, it's not very often that planning commission gets a chance to update, do a major update to a comprehensive plan. That's what I am here to talk to you tonight about. This is the formal public hearing for Shape Sioux Falls twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. I know all of you yesterday, I believe, received the executive summary. Hopefully, got a chance to take a look at that. I'm going to take you a little deeper into it today, tonight, with the presentation that I have. Hopefully, you got a chance to take a look at it on the internet. And then also, as we go through this, please, as I go through this, feel free to stop me as I go, ask questions. We want to make sure that we have a started dialogue because this isn't by, I would expect, we just put up draft two. I'm expecting a draft three by the time it goes to city council, so your input into that would be very important and I know other people's input has been important to that process, too. Why Shape Sioux Falls twenty thirty-five? Couple important things to remember. Comprehensive plan develops policies that will help guide future ordinances and budgets and master plans. Also, the last time we did a, the last comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan that's effective right now, has a horizon for 2015. Anybody know? Well, it says up there on your screen there. How long before 2015? Only five and a half years. So the last time we did a major update was 1996. That was 20 years. Now, we're looking at a 25-year horizon of 2035. Of course, as planners and as planning commission, it's important to look out that far, as fast as we're growing. A comprehensive plan guides future land development, which you're very intimately involved with, and so we want to make sure that we do that. This is one of your main documents. Of course, the future is shaped today, it's not shaped tomorrow, it's shaped right now, so we want to make sure that it's something that we do and we shape Sioux Falls through this plan. A couple of things that I thought was important for you to look at and bring to your attention is a couple of South Dakota statutes that directly deal with the comprehensive plan and the planning commission. South Dakota law 11614, your function and duty as a planning commission is to actually put a comprehensive plan together and in effect. 11615, the planning commission shall make careful and comprehensive plan surveys and studies of existing conditions, probable future growth. So again, right within state law, this is your document and I think that's important to mention and I think you know that, but there it is in state law. Also, it's important as part of consistency. We talk about the consistency doctrine a lot when looking at our implementation strategies, especially our zoning ordinance. 1143, zoning regulations still made in accordance with the comprehensive plan. That's very, very common throughout the nation that the comprehensive plan is the base document and the zoning ordinances come next. Sometimes people get that mixed up. 1161 talks about that similar thing. The zoning ordinance implements the comprehensive plan. Same thing with the subdivision ordinance. Conformity with the comprehensive plan. So again, we need to be aware of that. This is a very important document that we're looking at tonight. Next slide. So what I'd like to get into and talk to you about is each one of these chapters. There's 10 chapters. I'm going to talk a little bit more in detail in chapters three and four tonight as you and the planning commissioner are going to deal with that on a monthly basis. Chapter one is shaped community, deals with the goals and objectives of the plan. The rest of the document comes back to these goals and objectives. Each one of the chapters is linked to this chapter. Goal one is effectively managing growth, that's handled within chapter two. Goal two is planned neighborhoods, land use in urban form, those are dealt with in chapters three, four, five and six. And goal three is to improve the sustainability of the community. Three objectives there that I'm going to mention quickly. Objective A is environmental stewardship, B, economic health, and C, social equity. All three of those are the legs of sustainability, the three major legs of sustainability, so we did try to roll that into the plan. Chapter two is shaped growth. The overall intent of this chapter is to determine the location and phasing of new development out to the year 2035. The strategy we're using there is to ensure the city utilities can be provided in a timely manner to plan development. The way we implement this entire chapter is through our annexation process. Now, you guys don't typically hear about the annexation process, but you get the results of that, of course. So I want to go through and show you kind of where we're coming from on the way that we're going to be looking at growth and managing that growth. Here's the map, the major map within this chapter, a growth management plan, and we deal with it with a couple of different tiers. The areas that you see in the middle there, of course, that's the existing city limits, the tan, the light tan area. The little darker tan is the area that's not developed yet but has been annexed. The areas around that and the very dark brown, those are the areas we want to maintain as a rural area. One thing I want to add to this map is the future growth areas of the other communities that we have, which are T., Brandon and Harrisburg, doesn't show up on this map, but will on the next one. But we want to maintain those brown areas as rural. We work with the counties on that, as you know, with the joint process. The bright colored areas, the areas in blue, those are areas that would be available for annexation now within essentially, essentially, zero to five-year period and are programmed, improvements are programmed within the CIP. The areas in green would be available five to 15 years out and the areas in orange would be available in a 15 to 25-year period. So we're trying to phase out where we're going and in an efficient manner, so we're not going, trying to go everywhere at the same time. Next slide. Chapter three is shaped neighborhoods. I'm going to spend a little more time on this chapter because this is where we deal with some of the things you deal with a lot. Overall intent here is to guide the arrangement of future neighborhoods and employment centers within the 2035 growth area. Strategies to ensure overall objectives, intensity and impacts of land uses are consistent with the future land use map. Our implementation method here is the future land use map review that you guys do quite often and I think you had one here tonight. This is the current future land use map. We are making a pretty significant change in the way we do that future land use map, as you probably know. Right now, the current future land use map, for one, doesn't have the growth area that we're showing now. Also, we dealt with this more on, there's boxes and we tried to show where actually the growth was going to occur, whether it was commercial or residential, wherever. We know that typically this doesn't happen very often. It usually causes quite a bit of work for you guys on future land use map amendments, but doesn't typically provide what we're actually looking for, which is getting at the just, the general intensity and what we're looking for in the characteristics of a particular area. So what we're going to is this map, next map, which is more what we call a node map, which we're, and I'm going to go through the characteristics of each one of these areas, but the red areas are regional, the largest employment centers that we have. The green are subregional employment centers. Blue are community employment centers. Orange are the neighborhood employment centers, just based on their size, you could guess that the biggest ones are the regional, the smallest ones are the neighborhood. I'll deal with the characteristics in a second. You can also see there's industrial, there's major institutional areas, future residential areas, future parks and schools showing up here. Each one of those has different characteristics that we need to be looking at based upon its general location. Next slide. Within the plan, there's a future land use table detailing the characteristics and criteria of each one of these areas. For instance, in the regional area, that area is a regional center, commerce center with a regional draw, the future land use criteria, in this case, you're looking at over 320 total acres, no more than 50% commercial. Subregionals, it's 160 to 320 total acres and that's typically the entire intersection. That would be the entire intersection area, so it would be divided amongst those four different corners. And again, no more than 50% commercial there. To the right of there, and you can, that's fine where you're at there, Dave, but we deal with some of the core districts and also some of the support districts. What those are dealing with come in chapter four and those are some of the more specific zone districts that we're going to be dealing with and how we're going to have to mix some of those areas. On the last slide there, we dealt with more, larger commercial areas than we do in the commercial or the neighborhood employment centers. The community centers are a little bit smaller again, 60, 120 total acres with 50% commercial and neighborhood, only 15 to 60 acres, again, on that entire intersection, again, no more than 50% commercial. You can see what some of the support districts are. All the different employment centers allow for an optional plan development, which includes mixed use and we detail more specifically what some of the characteristics for that are and in very specifics deal with that in chapter five, which deals with some of the specific standards for mixed use. Business park is a little new. What that is dealing with is business park centers typically at the intersection of an interstate or regional corridor. They're along the interstates, they're along those major corridors that we have. What we're trying to do is bring those more compatible land uses, noise-compatible land uses along those major corridors that would be better suited for the noise that those highways generate. That would be business park, institutional, commercial types of uses. Here, 120 to 320 acres, but only 15 to 25% commercial. Characteristics are quite a bit different there. Low-density residential, that would allow, you know, your usual single-family residential areas, but also allow some support areas for institutional, multifamily, twin homes, townhomes. Industrial, we have the heavy industrial and the light industrial. On the map, it designates both of those. One of the things within the light industrial is commercial is not something that we would say we wouldn't allow at all. That's something we'd say is a support district in both of those areas. Next slide. Major institutional, we of course have a number of different major institutional areas around town, whether or not it's the hospitals or educational areas. We want to look at those areas and start to plan for those and start bringing master plans as part of that process to work with the different neighborhoods, so that's what this area is about and identifying. Future school institutions are identified on the map and some of the core and support districts. Next slide also indicates future parks, redevelopment areas and also the developed areas throughout the, throughout the, and within, and I'll show you on the map where the developed areas are at.
Sam and I talked about this, so this isn't a surprise, but when you look at this map, we had a future land use tonight. So at 85th and Minnesota, when you get the staff reports in the future, and this is what we really want you to kind of concentrate on tonight, and again, we realize it's getting late, but we wanted to kind of walk through some of these things for you. You see there's a green dot on there. So again, we see the green dot, you go to table two. So it's a subregional, so when they brought it in tonight, like Dave presented, that there wasn't a lot of commercial there, but you'd be looking at this table and you'd see it was 160 to 320 acres. What type of core districts are on that right-hand side? Is the characteristics what Sam has under the land use objectives? Did they present that information to you tonight? So the node is still there. It might look a little bit different, but you have characteristics that you will check against. And then what we're really hoping it does is not when they come back next month, when Harlan, you bring your proposal in, what we're hoping to see is those characteristics on the right-hand side, where Sam says core districts and preferred support uses, that's what they have to start showing us in chapter four for what type of zoning we want to see in the land use. So we think we have it laid out pretty well for these applicants also to use, but we're hoping that you understand it also.
Jeff, have you, and Sam, have you been easing developers into seeing, I know you're showing them this, I'm hoping that they're, you know, we all say we're open to change and we like change, but the reality is none of us do. So how are you helping them transition with their engineering and how they typically bring their staff reports forward to you? So we can make it, certainly in these times, that we can make it as easy for developers as possible?
Well, first of all, obviously, we'll work with them when they come in to present. It's not like they're going to show up and say, hey, you can't do it this way and so you have to wait another month. So we'll work through the process to get them up to speed, but at the same time, you know, the real quick, the answer is for the last two years, we've been showing this map and walking through this process. So we hope it's not a surprise, but you're right, it's going to be a surprise, just like we're hoping it's not a surprise to our planning commission either, that they're looking at this going, this is really different. It is, it's extremely different now as compared to what it was before and we're going to have that one developer, somebody show up go, wait a minute, I, this is totally news to me. Let's go back to that first part where I'm saying, we're going to work with them, we're going to try to get them up to speed as quickly as possible, but honestly, it's a better system because before, when they were stuck with that one little polygon, they said, I was never going to build it that way anyway, so now what am I supposed to do? Now, when they come in, they don't have a polygon, they look at the node, it's a circle, they go, yeah, I'm within those parameters. Okay, no future land use needed, it's meeting those characteristics, let's move you to zoning. Well, what zoning can I get in that area? The zoning you can get is listed right there. We never had that direction before. They'd all go, I want commercial. And that's the type of stuff you saw. Now, well, what type of commercial? We can start pointing to them, giving those leading directions so that hopefully it goes much smoother. Plus, speaking for Sam, we hope that the neighbors understand this, too. When neighbors show up and go, I live in this area, I never expect, they should start to understand they're living next to a regional or a neighborhood center and they're going to have this type of commercial zoning by them, that type of stuff doesn't show up in our current plan. What commercial zoning they're going to have, when you have an apartment complex by a single-family development, but now I'm talking to Sam's next chapter.
And let me also mention that one of the things on that, on our current future land use map, it details the buffers, the transitions very specifically. You have your commercial in the middle and then it deals with an orange or a blue. We don't deal with this in these employment centers. We don't tell them at that point that you need to do it exactly like this or come through with a future land use map review process or amendment. What we're saying is go to zoning, deal with your transitions there. So from that perspective, a lot of people are not having to stop there as long as their general intensities, the general characteristics are okay with that map. So we think it's more flexible in that way.
Madam Chair. Sam?
Quick question. As Jeff mentioned, the neighbors should start to understand that I'm living by a certain type of community, which should help make these meetings even easier because people should understand that development is going to happen. And I understand that you've had a number of community meetings. How have the, how has participation been for those meetings and people, neighborhood people, understanding that, yes, I do live next to a certain area that is now being defined in a different way? Have you had good reception?
I say, we see, nice to see people nodding their heads, yes, so...
You know, we've had, we have some meetings and I'm going to talk about the specific meetings that we have, you know, as I go and certainly, there's been a lot of public involvement throughout this entire process. A couple, you know, an open house as part of this process and also some chapter meetings on each one of the chapters, as you know. And any type of long-range document, we always know that participation isn't always really, you know, people aren't coming out like crazy for it until you get to the specifics. But that's why we spent a lot of time early on in the process with the visual listening survey and getting people out there and getting them interested and getting them engaged and so we've been real happy. engaged, and so we've been real happy with that.
Good, thank you.
Okay, so then we're going to go on to Chapter Four. After I get done with Four, things will move a little bit quickly, more quickly, so bear with me. Chapter Four is shaped transitions. The overall intent of this chapter is to maintain a neighborhood character by creating compatible transitions that minimize land use conflicts. The strategy we use here is to define the character of planned zoning uses and develop methods to transition those planned zoning uses through a land use compatibility chart. That's something that was recommended as part of Chapter Five. Implementation method here, you guys are very familiar with this, is the zoning and rezoning amendments. Zoning and rezonings are coming through. This is your chapter to look at the policies that we're going to use. Step one in this process is the actual process. There's three different things typically that you see as you come through. One is just a single zoning district development that comes in. The thing that's important here is that they should take in consideration existing and planned zoning uses adjacent to the development, based upon the compatibility chart you'll see a little bit later here. Also, you have multi-zoning district developments, and again, they should be looking at within their development, all the transitions that take place in their development and adjacent. And also, we would look at some flexibility in developments to combine zoning uses that are generally compatible. We see a lot of PDs around here, they're RA1 slash O. We'd like to see something probably brought into the standards and the zoning ordinance that would allow for that. Next slide. The third, or another part of Step One, is the mixed-use plan unit development districts, looking at emphasizing the appearance, design, and function of development rather than particular uses, more form-based. Advantage for the developer here is additional density is allowable with this option, and the advantage for the community is diverse urban environment, which functions as a whole with the neighborhood, living, working, shopping together, mixing all those uses together. We deal with a lot of that in Chapter Five, and you might remember that from when we brought through the land use and development policies. Obviously, consistency with this, Chapter Three is still important. When they bring that in, it needs to be consistent with that area, and you need to still be looking at that. If it's not, they need to go back to Chapter Three in the future land use map amendment. Step Two is define the planned zoning districts. The planned zoning districts we have within this plan include single-family residential, four different types, existing single-family, kind of the core area, suburban, neo-traditional, which would be more like what you have in the core, except doing it in newer areas, which allow for, what we're hoping for, one of our goals, which is looking at different densities and different types of housing options. Manufactured housing is also an option. Medium-density residential areas, twin homes, duplexes, three-to-eight unit structures, there's varieties of different units that we're looking at there, and those need to be allowed, looked at in great detail as we update our zoning ordinance. High-density residential uses are also defined in this section. We do a lot here with conventional, commercial uses also, as you might have seen on that table in Chapter Three, there's commercial one, two, three, and four. One is more in infill development neighborhood areas, more the 15,000 square foot buildings. Two is 25,000 square foot buildings. Three is 75,000 square foot buildings, and then four are your big box areas. So we're trying to identify within those areas that, what are, what are, what would be the best areas to build these different size commercial developments? Conventional, commercial site design would include prevent commercial and office expanding in the residential areas, commercial land uses at first full street or highway access points, prevent strip development from occurring, and land use transitions must include in the site design. We have some very specific things in the plan about that. Light industrial, not just allowing industrial there, but also allowing commercial uses as long as it doesn't change the character. Heavy industrial, not in environmentally sensitive areas. Talked about major institutional before, maintain the livability of the surrounding area with master plans. Office, small institutional. Mixed use, we deal with a couple types of mixed use. Horizontal mixed use and vertical mixed use, they're very specifically detailed in Chapter Five, as you might remember. In vertical mixed use, we deal with commercial-centered areas, those are along employment, within employment centers. The residential-centered area, mixed use would be allowed on the outsides or along the major streets, and then we also have some other PUD options that would be available too. Step Three is creating compatibility between planned zoning districts, and how do we do that but the compatibility chart? On the next slide, what is this chart, and how do we deal with it? The chart illustrates the compatibility level of proposed zoning districts to adjacent zoning districts. Hopefully, and I don't know if most of you understand this, when you look at this, or if you've been walked through this, but it's pretty easy. New zoning districts are on that left side, and the adjacent new or existing zoning districts are on the columns there. So that's what you would find, and we have a number of different types. The fives are most compatible, and then a one or a red, which doesn't show up on this one, would be least compatible, and I'm going to go through each one of those. Five is compatible, identical to the pre-existing zoning districts, would work very well. Four is compatible with minor conflict potential, the proposed zoning district is generally compatible with the pre-existing zoning district. Traffic from higher intensity districts should be directed away from the lower intensity districts. Building elements and scale should be consistent with surrounding proposed and existing development. That would be like medium-density residential or low-density residential. How could you just do some minor things to still make it more compatible? Three is potential incompatibility. Here, there's a little bit more of a problem, and you should be looking at maybe a planned unit development district. An example of this would be high-density residential against low-density residential. I guess we just heard one like that, we'll maybe talk about a little more in a second. Office and limited commercial against residential uses. Two is medium incompatibility. In this case, there's some significant incompatibilities we should be looking at. In a lot of cases, you might have intervening buffer uses, or a significant transition policies you should be looking at here. Planned unit development district, this might be, include community and general commercial district against residential uses. And then one, and the next one is high incompatibility. Generally, you don't want to allow this. This is the one where you really don't typically want to, unless there's, as we talk about, extensive documentation to prove that the effects are going to be limited. So going to the compatibility chart, there's two, to fit it on, we had to put it on two different pages, but this shows you, and I think the one that we just were talking about, I think it's on the next one I wanted to deal with, or was I wrong? Commercial, is it this one here? Yeah, the third one down, we were dealing with. High-density residential. Low, yeah, it's, oh, you wanted to do with that one?
Yeah.
He's got another one.
Because with this one, this is the one that we had this evening, it was a final development plan, but when this major amendment came before you, what we're expecting is it's going to be easier for you to do rezonings or major amendments in the future, because you look on the left-hand side, they were proposing high-density residential, greater than 12 units per acre, and they were adjacent to light-density residential. So as Dave pointed out, it's a three. So if it would be a one or two, I mean, it's pretty easy for you guys to make decisions on the zoning. If it's a five or four, I mean, if it's a one or two, you can make a decision pretty cut and dry on what they're proposing versus what's adjacent. Threes come up, and you say, yeah, there's some incompatibility, but you should need to do a PD, you need to put several regulations in here, and we're going to see you coming back for a final development plan to make sure that you address those issues, and that's what took place tonight on that major amendment. So, but we've never had something like this before. We always had those rezonings, and you sit here and you struggle going, should we really have industrial next to office? Look at the chart, see if it's a one or a two, four or five, make the motion, and you can move on.
So for our short-term memory minds, we'll have this chart every single time.
And staff will be able to refer to it by the one, two, three, four, five.
I just have a quick question. Is this something that you guys developed, or was it something that other cities have used?
Yeah, well, actually, when we were going through the land use and development policies through Chapter Five, one of the recommendations that came from our consultant was, this was a recommendation, and they had done it before.
Okay.
We had then, you know, put it together as part of this section.
Okay.
Actually, worked a little bit better, we thought. Okay. Does it generally make sense? That's one thing we asked when we were on a chapter meeting, was it understandable? If there's something you don't, you know, let us know.
Sam?
Yes.
Are there, for a three, for example, are there general recommendations that come along with what can make a potential incompatibility work, that you're able to, staff is able to give to the developer, to say, hey, if you want this to go through, the general recommendations are these things?
Yeah, and I think that's something you're going to see a little bit more, first of all, with the zoning ordinance updates that we do, number one. And number two, you talked about, as Dave underlined there, landscaping, buffering, screening, those type of things, we do a lot, but it's like, when? Well, in a three, that would certainly be advisable.
Yeah.
And something you'd like to look at.
That leads right to Chapter Five.
Yeah, and Chapter Five, we talked about in the transition section, how we can do some of those things, so you can draw from those things too.
Thank you.
And that leads to Chapter Five, which is shaped places, our land use and development policies. You might remember, you recommended that, and City Council adopted that chapter earlier on. It's by far the thickest chapter of the entire, and it's really very new, it's very visual. Hopefully, it's something you can utilize as a planning commission as we do some of these things and make some of those recommendations on transitions and other things. It's to help develop the form of the zoning ordinance standards and provide additional development options in planned development districts. Implementation will be in the actual zoning ordinance standards, so we'll be rolling it into that, and then also, you'll be seeing, as Stevie even has mentioned in, I think, his last presentation, bring in some of those standards and some of the PUD district regulations as part of final plans. This is where most of our public involvement was completed, although we had a lot, and I'll mention some of that even since then, the visual listening survey, 1,500 people took that survey, stakeholder meetings, review committee meetings, we had eight meetings, public open houses, and then of course, the approval earlier this year. The sections on this, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, are vertical mixed use, next slide, horizontal mixed use, which is pedestrian development, next slide, streetscape, next slide, signage, multimodal, open space, public and private, parking, and transition, and that's some of the things that we talked about, some of the transition sections, pulling some of the buffering and landscaping options for transitions. Now, just kind of review, this is something we put together, and as we get you used to this new document, you'll see more of this, trying to help you, guide you through the process. For planning commission development summary, you're dealing with shaped transitions, neighborhoods, shaped places, three, four, and five. Three is future land use map review, where you're dealing with general location, general size, general characteristics. When that's done, move on. Chapter Four, shaped transitions, rezonings and zoning districts. Define the characteristics of the zoning districts and those transitions, as you do in the rezonings, when that's done, then we move on. In the shaped places, that's where they deal with the, some of the site plans and PUDs and standards within the actual zoning ordinance, so we'll be using that to update our zoning ordinance as that's coming up. And so those are important things for you to be looking at and remembering, and we'll work on those things as we get you used to this document, so hopefully that's helpful. Now, with that, I'm going to take you through the remaining chapters. Chapter Six, shaped corridors, is another important chapter for you to look at. Essentially, this is developing attractive street corridors and other corridors that enhance and reinforce adjacent development. Strategy here is to determine general density and setback areas for neighborhoods based upon each corridor's environment and current development patterns. We do this through corridor studies and our zoning ordinance, so we'll be bringing and looking at corridors, specific corridors, corridor overlay districts, and we do even now, and the specifics that we need to be looking at on those corridors and how they develop, or how they, how they deal with adjacent development, how they affect adjacent development. We do look at that with, on the next slide, street development patterns. We have suburban strip development, that are of course different than urban high-density areas like the downtown area. Well, how should that affect the development patterns and the development ordinances within that area? And that's something that we'll be rolling into our zoning ordinance and need to be looking at, of course. And you can see all the other different kinds, types of development patterns within there, whether or not the urban core, which is kind of our core area, or the suburban curve-linear areas that you see a lot being developed now in residential areas, or a lot of other types of commercial and residential development patterns. Other corridor considerations are complete streets, we need to be looking at that with all different corridors, including all the different modes, of which would be pedestrian, bicycle, transit. Also looking at distinctive street corridors, which could be historical downtown, natural neighborhood streets, and how those, each of those are distinctive. That could include like streets like 49th Street, Southeastern, 21st Street, and we'll be looking at probably more distinctive street corridor studies as we go on with that. Shaped facilities is Chapter Seven. The overall intent there is to maintain and improve city-owned facilities. We do that by providing and maintaining public facilities and services at uniformly high standard in all neighborhoods of the city. Implementations through our CIP. Essentially, these are rolling and determining over the next 25 years what our improvements are going to be, so that we can plan for our CIP and start rolling those major projects into that. So what are going to be on the radar screen? We look at transportation, wastewater, water, storm drainage, landfill, library, fire, parks, all those different facilities and infrastructures are important to look at there. This is kind of hard to read, but it is in the plan, all the different facilities and infrastructure needs that we have over, I think they're, each ones are five-year periods. Fire stations, community centers, even looking at our new city hall there, landfills, event center does show up there, so look at all those things. Next, there's also city services. What city services do we provide, and how do they link with our objectives, including social equity? Next slide, also citizen participation and accountable government, we deal with that there. Chapter Eight is shaped foundations, which is to conserve and revitalize the older or foundation neighborhoods. The strategy there is to identify neighborhood conservation areas based upon a concerted grassroots neighborhood planning effort. There we deal with an implementation of neighborhood plans and some neighborhood tools that we have. A lot of that, the focus of this is this map here, the neighborhoods that we see on the radar screen for neighborhood conservation efforts or revitalization, are these neighborhoods, typically in the core area of the city, and you can see the neighborhoods that we're looking at. And also, dealing with some of the, on the next slide, the historical districts, and preserving those and maintaining those historical, the historical integrity of those neighborhoods or those districts. Chapter Nine is shaped resources. Overall intent there is to conserve, protect important environmental, human, and economic resources through sustainable practices. Strategies, protect those through identification of resources, protection through land use ordinances, land purchases, and develop other sustainable implementation strategies. We'll do that through the subdivision ordinance, the CIP, zoning overlay districts, and also looking at future resource master plans, like a sustainability master plan. Environmental assets, we're identifying and look at in this plan, wetlands, floodplains, steep slopes, archaeological sites, things like that. Man-made development constraints showing up on this map, the airport, old landfills, major gas pipelines, things like that. Other resource considerations, critical open space, looking at urban forests, which are important to maintain and show the importance of our landscape ordinance, and conserving resources, cleanliness, pollution prevention, resources, greening, green buildings, land, conserving, looking at land as a resource. And then, that last chapter then is how we implement all those things, zoning ordinance, and of course, as you know, we'll be looking at revising that next year. and of course, as you know, we'll be looking at revising that next year. And the subdivision ordinance, capital improvement plan, annexation, the zoning and subdivision jurisdiction, and you guys work with that with Lincoln County and Minniac County, that's a part of this, and, which leads to the formal adoption process. Tonight is the public hearing on this. City council, the plan is to go to city council on December 7th. The joint city-county planning commissions, which you guys would be involved with in two different effects, would be looked at in January, hopefully, and then the governing bodies, joint governing bodies in February. The next slide, I think, believe, talks about, you're required by 11-6-17 to hold a public formal meeting, that's tonight. It's been noticed, so we've done all that. Opportunity for that is right after this, public involvement. What we've had, that was asked by Mike to just go through that quickly. August 25th, we had an open house, 70 people attended that. Chapter review meetings, we had a number of those. You can see how many people attended those. The benefit for that was we really got in-depth input. Two of the people are here tonight, and they spent a lot of time, and I thank them for that, and there was a lot of the people that spent a lot of time giving us input. Isn't understandable. I know some, a lot of you were involved with those, we appreciate that. To find out, you know, with a document that size, doesn't make sense, and then we made revisions, and that was really helpful. We had written comments, and we had comments from the open house, and we made changes based upon that. And within the appendix, if you look at that, I tried to detail where we made the changes based upon the comments, and I think that's important to mention. With that, I take a deep breath, and...
Are you sure you want us to ask any questions after that?
I do, so, and I also want to leave time if either Mike or Perry would like to offer their comments on the process or anything else, so I don't leave any time for them, too. So, yes, I would like...
Well, I would just like to say, Sam, that I was, I was here on Monday when you presented it to the city council, and I was really impressed with the two, a couple of people from the public sector that got up and spoke about it, and I really commend them for the time that they also put in on, you know, giving their input into this, into this report. And of course, the time that you've spent, but I really, I commend you for that. You've had a lot of patience throughout this whole process.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions of Sam?
I'd like to reserve any more of my time to them.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, just...
I don't know if Mike would want to.
We'll see if we have any questions for you, and then we'll see if they would like to come up.
Absolutely.
Any questions?
Okay, all right. I think that's all then, Sam. Thank you. Would you like to come forward and make your comments? And please just tell us your name and your address.
I am Michael Christensen, 1813 South Purdue Avenue. Excuse the dress, I was in the neighborhood and stopped by.
That's quite right.
I attended the visual listening survey. I brought friends to the visual listening survey. As the foundation of this process, I think seeing the pictures, knowing what kind of community people want to live in, and seeing the results of that survey, I think speaks marvelously about where this can go. I attended a stakeholder meeting as a interested party in transportation. I attended a couple of the chapter meetings. And I'm really excited about the goals of this plan. Goal number three, I want to live in a community that is sustainable or that at least strives to be. And so, and that high level, those three goals are beautiful, and so I would like you guys to support this. And thank you for the city planning office. I trust that they're doing the best work they can and that this document reflects that, so thank you.
Can I ask?
Yes.
What needs you get more involved than just watching it on the news and maybe go into a meeting?
I wanted to live differently, and part of that is living in a community, which is Sioux Falls. I've been, I'm a 28-year resident, and so I got involved in some of the processes and so, yeah.
Well, thanks for taking a proactive approach.
You're welcome.
We need a lot more citizens like you.
Thanks.
I'm just curious, what is your occupation?
I'm an IT guy at Dakota Care.
Okay.
And in my off-hours, I volunteer for stuff like this.
Well, we need more people like that. Any other questions for him? Thank you very much.
Perry Hanovan, reside at 6,400 West 53rd Street. And I could sort of detect some of the enthusiasm as I watched Sam present some of the concepts and ideas, and I think all of us that were involved in this, of course, some of the meetings were a little bit boring as we read through all of the documentation and tried to understand and make suggestions, but let me make a few comments. I want to really appreciate and commend the work of Sam and Jeff and other city planners who have spent a lot of time putting this together. And I attended the open house. I also serve on another committee, which Sam presented to Citizens Advisory Council involving transportation, and that's where my interest was piqued. And I then attended all of the chapter meetings and tried to invite all of my friends, neighbors, church members, to get involved in this process. And I must say that some said, well, you probably won't be around by the year 2035. And I said, well, that doesn't matter, I'm going to try and go as far as I can. I'll probably be about 94 at that stage. And I also invited Sam to come and present at Augustana College where I teach, because we have students that are interested in conservation, we have faculty as well that are interested in environmental issues, and in chapter eight, the Augustana community is one of the neighborhoods that's mentioned. So I wanted to provide as many people as I could influence to hear the story and to get involved. We as citizens need to stop complaining and get involved. And I think oftentimes, the problem with government is we don't have enough citizen involvement, and we need to be involved. So I wanted people to be involved. This is a great community to live in. I do want to say that at our chapter meetings, our numbers weren't huge, but we did have a broad base of representation there, from, I'll call myself an ordinary citizen, to some developers and realtors, so we had, I think, a fairly good mix at these meetings to kind of hear and review this. And at Augustana, we had a mix of some students and a few faculty, and one neighbor showed up, and it was quite, it was quite inviting to hear the comments and interests of our young citizens that are growing up and will live perhaps in this community and other communities like this. So I, I also wanted to comment that I, I think this, that there's been quite a bit of opportunity for citizens to be involved. The website where this was, if you went to siouffalls.org, it was right there on the lead web page, on the website there, so it was very easy for people to find this. My friends that could not attend meetings, I suggested that they go there and provide comments. So there was a lot of opportunity for, for citizens to make comments. You could tell from Sam's presentation, he's kind of lived and breathed this, and he probably dreams about it at night. But a few of my comments, and if you have any questions. But I'm excited about the plan. I would like even more to happen. Some of us are really kind of forward, like to live on the edge and see things happen, and some like to kind of wait and see how things will happen, but I, we need a vision, and I think there is a vision here in the plan.
How did you find out about the meetings?
I found out primarily because Sam made a presentation at a meeting.
Oh, okay.
And invited us, and I said, yes, this is a great opportunity to get involved. Rather than sit around and complain about things, this is an opportunity to help shape. And so that was my attitude, and that's why I got involved.
Great, thank you for your involvement.
Yeah.
Any questions for Perry?
All right, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
I'm Mike Cooper, Planning and Building Services. Just quickly, I want to make two comments about this item tonight. As you remember, we're celebrating the 50th anniversary this year of our planning commission. And although we had a comprehensive plan done back in about 1950, what I will call kind of the modern era of planning in Sioux Falls, this is only going to be the third time that we have done a comprehensive plan. The first one was really in 1979, which is what we called back then the Year 2000 Plan. And then as Sam talked to you tonight about, in 1996, we did the 2015 Plan. And so we don't do this very often. It is a pretty historic moment, and I just, I think I'm very excited about this as the rest of the staff is. And I think as we go forward into the next stage of this process, which is the update of the zoning ordinance, that's going to be a major step for us as well. So we're very excited about working on that with all of you. And then just second of all, I would just again like to echo what we said tonight about thanking the staff for all the hard work that they put into this, the passionate work, the volunteers, including the planning commission, the citizens. And again, I think that says a lot about Sioux Falls as we go forward into the next stage of this process. So one of the good things about, or one of the things about being a good manager is that you need to publicly commend people when they do a good job, and I just wanted to get up here to do that tonight. So for all those thousands of people listening and watching this tonight, the staff has done a great job, and you as the planning commission should feel proud about that, too, because again, we don't do this very often. So we're looking forward to taking this to the city council, and we hope we can get some citizen port, support at that meeting as well to take it on to the next step. So thanks for your help.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, I think what they want us to do is to vote as to whether or not we want to adopt this plan. So I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we adopt the Shape Sioux Falls 2035 Plan.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any more discussion?
Again, I just want to say, I recognize it is a pretty historic time, and I know we've talked about, I will soon be approaching my fifth year on the commission, and really this was talked about almost when I first got here. And I think obviously, one of the biggest steps is yet to come, what the change in the zoning code will be. And I know that people have asked for that for quite some time, so I think based on really all the hard work and the great foundation that's been laid, is that it will be a great opportunity for the city of Sioux Falls to move forward in a really robust and comprehensive way as we move forward to updating the zoning codes that will most fit how people live, work, play, and reside in Sioux Falls. So again, I can only thank Mike for the direction and Sam for carrying out that vision, and really hats off to you for making the next 35 years really going to be a great, great forward, forward plan and forward thinking and make Sioux Falls all the great things that it is. So hats off to you, Sam, and the rest of the staff as well.
Once again, I'm not going to beat a dead horse here, but I really am, I do want to commend you for this. But you know what? I think one of the most exciting parts of this whole thing is the community involvement. I mean, I think that, I think it's just amazing that we had, that the number of people that we did, that, from, from the general community that would, that had input into this report. And I, I don't know, I just, I think it's fantastic that we were able to do that, or that, I shouldn't say we, that you guys were able to do that and to encourage that. That's really important. Thank you. Okay, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item 16 passes. Now I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, so move.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Move.
Opposed? I have a meeting adjourned.
Thank you, everybody. You're welcome.